For August 20, 2024. Those that would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and please do.
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. And give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
entertain a motion from council to approve the consent agenda.
To move.
Second.
Second.
Any corrections or additions, changes? Seeing none, all of us in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Consent agenda is passed unanimously. Good morning, Mrs. Hurley. How are you?
Good morning, Council President, Council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this morning is a public hearing on Resolution Number 93-2024. This is amending the fiscal year 25 operating and capital budget to use a portion of the expected fiscal year 26 capital funding for the Wacomiko County Free Library in the amount of $330,000. The Wacomiko Public Library is adjusting its timeline for the renovation of the former Ward Museum, moving the design phase of fiscal year 25 construction to fiscal year 27. To expedite the process, the library is requesting $330,000 from the contingency fund to begin the initial designs. A public hearing notice was posted on the county's website and published in the local newspaper for this public hearing, as well as the other two public hearings we have on the agenda this morning. And we have Mr. Seth Hirschberger, Director of the Wacomiko Public Libraries here, and Pam Owen, Director of Finance.
At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution 93-2024. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concern in reference to Resolution 93-2024.
Good morning. My name's Joe White. I'm a resident of Wacomiko County. I was at the initial public hearing for the library, and I stated at that time, and I'd like to restate, that we do not have an all-encompassing plan on exactly how much this is going to cost, soup to nuts. And I'm going to reference the fact that the library has already purchased a property in Parsonsburg that had a plan two years ago. That property is still sitting vacant. There's no plan for that, no public plan. I think expediting this plan is not going to work out well. We do not know all of the ins and outs of what's wrong with this building, and even by Salisbury University's own admission, they had very large numbers. It's why they felt it was necessary to remove the Ward Foundation out of there. That's between them and the Ward Foundation. I think we're stepping into something that's going to cost these taxpayers more money than we realize. And I'd like for you to consider not expediting this project. I'm not saying can it. I'm just saying, don't speed it up. I think that that's going to cause us to run into an issue. Thank you.
Mr. White, any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing for Resolution Number 93-2024. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 93-2024. Motion to approve?
Some move.
Okay, second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is Mr. Hirschberger here?
Mr. Hirschberger is not here. I know Mr. Chip DeShiel is here, President of the Board.
I am here, and I know Mr. Hirschberger expected to be here, and so I'm not sure of the reason, but I don't know. Maybe he might come a little bit later, but I know you were first on the agenda, so I don't know, but I do know he was planning to be here.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. DeShiel. Pam?
Pam Owen, Finance Director. So, based on timeline, the need to move this forward is so that we can, when we hope the grant is awarded to the...
Speaking of the devil.
When we hope that this grant is awarded, we then already have the plan in place versus if we wait till fiscal '26 to start the plan, and we get then awarded the grant, then we can't start building until we actually have a plan. So, the intention is, is to move the planning phase into '25 so that if, and hopefully when, awarded the grant from the state, we then have the funding, we have a plan in place to go ahead and start moving forward, versus waiting and then having to do a plan at that point in time. I did want to correct one statement from Mrs. Hurley. She had stated this was coming from contingency. This is actually coming from fund balance. So, we have this...
Does that require any type of an amendment?
That's actually in the resolution. She just misstated it. So, I just wanted it to be clear to the public that the resolution states fund balance, not contingency.
So, if this doesn't get approved today, where are we?
If this doesn't get approved today, then we would be bringing this to council in the fiscal '26 budget process, but Mr. Hirschberger can talk more about the concept of that. But again, it goes back to, we then would be behind and not be able to spend the state grant. The state grant is intended for construction, and unless we have plans, we can't construct anything.
Begging the pardon of the council for my late arrival, Seth Hirschberger, Executive Director of the Library. If this was not approved today, where we would be is behind when we are awarded the grant. This was one of the two things that the state library recommended we do in order to ensure that we are in a good position to expend all the funds from the grant when we received it. I've mentioned to the council before that the money that's awarded for these grants is often not spent in time, and so it's lost, in part because of the time that it takes for the design phase. So, they recommended that we get started as soon as possible so that that process could be completed before the grant is awarded.
So, the $330,000, how much expenditures of that's going to have to take place, or will take place, before we find out if we get the grant? And what happens if we don't get the grant? That money's just lost?
I hope to know with absolute certainty about the grant in about a month's time. That's when, and our grant request has already cleared two major hurdles. The hurdles that I've been advised are the biggest, most difficult ones, including the peer review process. Right now, it's already cleared out of the State Library Board as approved, and it's gone on to a higher-level state board for approval, by which time it's usually a matter of formality. So, we're hopeful that we'll see full funding for our application.
So, you'll know about the grant in a month?
On September 16th, actually.
Okay, well, so will any of this money be spent before then?
I mean, we might have a PO in place, but that would be about it. I mean, they could potentially have started, but we won't have expended significant dollar amount. We're sitting here on the 20th of August. We have to go through the PO process, go through the contract process, all of that. That will take a week or two. So, we could be sitting here, you know, maybe they spend $5,000, $10,000.
Can I make a suggestion? Could we maybe approve the money that you need to get started until you receive that grant, and then we can give you the rest?
I mean, we have to contract for the full amount. So, the concept is, is we have to contract, we have to create a PO for a full contract. We don't have the bid documents written in such a way that we can say, okay, only do $5,000 worth of work. We have to write, our procurement rules require us to issue a PO for the full contract.
So, when you say we'll be behind, but you're going to find out next month if we get the grant, we would only be behind 30 days, give or take?
Right, and two points of clarification. We will, we will know that it's cleared out of a higher-level state board next month, but until it's been approved in the legislative session, in the governor's capital budget, that's when, you know, signed, sealed, delivered, we are free to spend the money.
The grant's for how much, again?
The grant at this round is worth just under $3 million for Phase 1 of the project, including the county's match.
So, in theory, if we approve this $300,000, and the county starts to spend it, and we don't get that grant, we now have an asset that's incomplete.
So, we have a, we would have a plan for a redesign of the Ward Museum that we then would not be able to implement at this point in time. We would have to, at that point in time, evaluate whether or not we anticipate getting the grant in the future, or having to look at some of our other options. But as Mr. Hirschberger said, state grants have a timeline, and if we have to do design after we know that we have been awarded the grant, we are in possible jeopardy, I can't say that we are, but in possible jeopardy that we can't expend the full dollars of the grant, and then we have lost that, and then the county has to decide at that point in time, okay, are we spending, do we need to spend the more money? So, again, $330,000, this was an anticipated cost for fiscal '26. What they have asked us to do to make it look more advantageous also as we're going through the grant process, is that we have committed to renovate this building to make it a library. So, this is also an indication to the state that, hey, Wacomiko County is interested in making this facility a library. They have already budgeted for and already starting the expenditure process of renovating this building. And so, it is a strong signal to state, to the state, that we are committed to the project.
And you're saying that we're really through the two major hoops right now. We just have one more, one more step to take?
I would say two more, if you include the legislative approval for the governor's capital, the governor's capital budget. But yes, there is one higher-level state board that will meet on the 16th and will make a recommendation of what should go in the governor's capital budget.
But, oh, I'm sorry. I was going to say, as a follow-up, and I know we've had, we've had work sessions with you already on this. There was a suggestion made today that we were not aware completely of the condition of the property, but I know that several studies have been made, and the second issue that was made, that we don't know the exact cost, soup to nuts. Could you address those two for us?
Yes, and in fact, the library was awarded federal funding through LST, through the Library Services Technology Act, for the amount of $24,500, which includes some conceptual design work and also feasibility, a closer look at the building than we've done so far, and that's taking place. That's underway. We've already been invoiced a couple of times for that feasibility study, which we'll know a whole lot more about the building by the time we have that report, and we'll also have some very specific goals in mind for our Friends Foundation, which has begun to meet and set goals for itself. And then we'll know how much we need in addition to the total approximately $8 million over the two phases of the project, so that we can start to fundraise based on those goals. So, there's actually already an architect in and out of the building, and we've already had some meetings with stakeholders about the design and layout based on that $24,500 that we secured through a grant, through a federal grant. We've also conducted a study of the mold in the building and found that there is mold that will have to be remediated, but it's actually not as bad as we were concerned about. It's just limited to some areas, some limited areas of the building that will need to be addressed, and it's concentrated in the areas that will be most demolished and renovated. So, we're working with the architect on what to do about that and the timeline of when to remediate the mold. We also know that the main unit of the HVAC is not operating, but that there are some, some sections of the building where there is HVAC that is operating, and we are running those in order to keep the humidity in the building down.
It sounds like we're gambling with $330,000, and hopefully, you know, we don't want to hold up the project. Our second meeting in September is on the 17th. Could we do a consensus if we reach, if we jump this third hurdle, I'll call it, you got four hurdles to go through, right? Could the council do a consensus that if that next hurdle is approved, that we would then approve this transfer? Would that be, would that be something that we could do?
I'd go along with that.
So, if I understand correctly, you would just kind of put this on hold till the second meeting in September. We've already done the public hearing, so we wouldn't have to advertise and do another public hearing. The council could table this, is that the right word?
Yeah.
Table this until the second meeting in September.
Or we could make a motion that this would be...
It's technically a motion to postpone to September 17.
Motion to postpone, or we could introduce a motion to amend, saying that this resolution will pass based on the approval, approval of the...
Probably cleanest to just postpone would be my, my opinion.
I would suggest we send a letter, send a letter of support to whoever this board is. What board is it, the next one?
I'm sorry, I don't remember. I think it's the, I don't want to say.
It's not the Public Works, it's not board...
It is Public Works, thank you. Yes, it's the Board of Public Works.
Yeah.
And, you know, the governor serves on that, the state treasurer and somebody else, and, you know, if they approve it, the governor's there, already given his approval, so possibly when it comes up for the last hurdle, which would be in the legislature, they'll get the governor's support. So, I think that's a safe thing to do.
Jeff's suggesting a letter of support. Are we okay with that?
I agree. Is the postponement, it's not going to hurt you?
It doesn't, I don't believe it. I think we can wait...
I'm okay with it for myself, because we're already working on it with the LSTA funds, and I'm not even sure that we would have expended all those funds by the time we get into mid-September.
Okay. Another comment that was made, Director Hirschberger, since you're here, is that Parsonsburg, that we're not moving forward with Parsonsburg, but I believe we are.
We are going to move forward, hopefully at the very next meeting of the council. I'll be back to ask for this body to accept a donation from the library to add to the amount that has already been designated for the capital funds for the renovation of the building in Parsonsburg, so that a grant, which we've already gone through the bidding process, so that a, I'm sorry, contract can be awarded to the lowest bidder.
So, yeah, we missed the deadline for advertising since that was a capital budget amendment, so we're asking for that to be on the next agenda.
Can I make a motion on the postponement?
Can I make a motion? We postpone Resolution 93-2024 until the second meeting in September. Is that right? Okay.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor, say aye. Post. Motion's carried. Postponement passes.
Thank you.
Motion for postponement passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing on Resolution Number 94-2024. This is approving a license agreement with the town of Sharp Town on behalf of the Department of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism for a period of five years. This is an agreement with the town of Sharp Town for the use of the Coke Bennett Park and Jean Low Park located in Sharp Town for recreational activities. The proposed agreement is for a term of five years at the rental rate of $1 per year with the renewal term of five years. And we have Steve Miller here, Director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism.
At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution Number 94-2024. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution 94-2024. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 94-2024. To move? Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Resolution 94-2024 passes unanimously.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing on Resolution Number 95-2024. This is amending the fiscal year 2025 operating and capital budget to make a supplemental appropriation for the purchase of 41.2 acres, more or less, on the northerly and southerly sides of Naylor Mill Road in the amount of $1 million in inspection, survey, tree planting, and closing costs in the amount of $36,000. Council had a few work sessions regarding the purchase of this property. This resolution is approving the capital funding to acquire the property. The county intends to use the property for the soil, and then the soil will be used as soil covering for the Newland Park landfill. And we have Mike Swaby here, Director of Public Works, if you have any questions.
At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution 95-2024. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concern. Good morning.
My name is James Dolly, and I live in Wacomiko County. The proposed purchase of this property for landfill cover soil brings to mind the acquisition of the Connolly Mill quarry site in 2018. While both sites serve a similar primary purpose, I urge the county to prioritize transparency and thorough due diligence throughout the use of the property now and in the future if it's purchased. It's crucial that taxpayers have a clear understanding of the potential environmental impacts, financial costs, long-term plans for the property. We must learn from past experiences and ensure that this purchase benefits both the county's needs and the well-being of our community. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mikael Dolly in Wacomiko County, and I'll keep it brief, just building on what he's saying, these past experiences we're kind of talking about, you know, our neighborhood was involved with the 2008 acquisition of Connolly Mill for landfill cover, and we, you know, we were included as stakeholders, and a promise was made about how the property would be used and what the future use would be. This being changed now has felt very much like a bait and switch. It's caused our community a huge amount of trouble and ordeal. So, you know, when we see this, we're really hoping that this will take some of the pressure off Connolly Mill, that there will be the lack of transportation costs that was promised, and that'll be a good thing for everybody, but, you know, we ask too, that, you know, we don't forget that, you know, a promise was made about the Connolly Mill property, and that we get back to that promise so that, you know, so that the community can feel confident in the way that county property will be used when they work to accept it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jim Atkins, Wacomiko County. I am not opposed at all to the county purchasing this property for the intended purpose. It needs to be done, and the landfill needs to expand and keep functioning. My concern is the last two things that have been spoken about here to the council. The council just adopted a budget a month ago for the expenses for this county for the upcoming year. So far this morning, 18 minutes into the council meeting, the council's been asked for $300,000 for a library that wasn't in the budget for this year. It's now being asked for $1 million for the landfill that wasn't in the budget this year. This seems to be a lot more of this run into the council, we got to have this right away. Where was all the planning and talking? Why wasn't this included in the CIP? Why wasn't this included in the budget? We want to keep talking about the budget, the revenue cap, and busting the revenue cap. This looks to me like it's just the way around busting the revenue cap, because they don't put things in a budget which they know will be cut or adopted. They wait till the budget's passed, and then they run in here and say, we need money, we need money. It's got to stop, folks. It's got to stop.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes the public comments on Resolution Number 95-2024. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 95-2024. To move? Second.
Second.
Motion's second, then discussion.
Good morning, all. Mike Swaby, Deputy Director of Public Works, here with Heather Langford. I had the impression Ms. Owen was going to be here to address any specific...
I didn't see you behind me.
I apologize. So, for financial questions, she will address those, as this item is somewhat connected to the, very connected to the next one. I didn't know what the basis of the questions would be, but we're here to support any background and inquiries you may have.
I know this is a topic that we have discussed...
I have a question.
...many, many years and many work sessions on this Potts property. Shani, go ahead.
I have a question. It's just the map, parcel B and parcel A, and it looks like, from the one I see, Naylor Mill Road, and I've just crossed, like, 11 the Shields Road. Am I correct? The addition of north, right where the landfill is. So, parcel B and parcel A. Now, where is parcel A at? Where's that located?
Directly behind the landfill.
Parcel A is...
There's a tree line that separates the two.
So, parcel A is on the south of Naylor Mill Road, and B is on the north.
Because it looks like it's across the street.
So, they do cross the street.
Yeah, A and B cross the street, so it is between Business 50 and the landfill is where A and B are, but it's divided by Naylor Mill Road. So, if you make, if you're coming from Mardella, and you come up to the traffic light where the 7-Eleven is, you make the right-hand turn, right there on the left is one, and I don't know which is A and which is B, sorry.
A is on the left.
So, A is on the left, and B is on the right, as you're headed towards the landfill, and as you see the reservoir there on the right. So, again, A and B are on either side of the, of Naylor Mill Road as you turn right off of Business 50 headed towards the landfill.
The other question, are there any houses near the one to the right by the reservoir?
No.
Okay, that's, that's my question.
And this money is coming from the fund balance. This is not coming from general fund money. This is coming from the fund balance associated with the solid waste, which is an enterprise fund, which is, collects all of its funds from tipping fees. So, this is not coming from any tax dollars. The only piece that the landfill takes from the general fund, and council's aware of this, is when we borrow for the landfill, we borrow at advantageous rates because we say the government is backing it, but the borrowing is all borrowed from funds and repaid from funds that are 100% coming from the landfill. And in the past, as we have previously discussed, actually, the general government borrowed from the landfill, not the other way around. So, again, this is all money being generated by the landfill and not tax dollars.
Yes, Jeff.
So, I know we talked about this, so the public's aware, this property will be used for mining soil and expansion of the landfill towards Business Route 50, that's not happening.
No, no expansion involved whatsoever.
Just...
I know that, and you know that. I want to make sure...
No expansion. Just land, just coverage of, for dirt.
Reason being, I guess, is that it's cheaper than trucking it from Connolly Mill.
It's cheaper than trucking it from Connolly Mill. It is cheaper than buying it from somebody else ultimately, and so this future proof, not future proofs, but future for a period of time gives us the product ourselves than having to acquire it from another source.
Judge.
What is the current, what's the process for a soil analysis, or, pardon me, a analysis of the, how much soil is left specifically for the, you know, the Connolly Mill site? I think the folks that live around there, of course, want to make sure that they have a pretty good estimate within, you know, two years' worth of soil, or maybe there's a date the administration has already said, hey, we're actually stopping, we are no longer going to be grabbing soil from this property come July 2026, or whatever it is. longer going to be grabbing soil from this property come July 2026," or whatever it is. But helping those, the folks that live there, around there, and the larger public, how do we have a better understanding of how much soil is left there, what the timeline is there, and then when we would transition to then grabbing soil from these two properties?
So, I'm going to defer for details to Heather about that, but in principle, the Connolly Mill site is, remains an asset to us in terms of its content for soil. It's not nearly exhausted. The proposed site, the Potts property, will be valuable to us, very much so now, but even more so as we expand. So, we do fully intend to exhaust what is at Connolly Mill, so if you want to get into that.
So we did a calculation of how much we actually removed from Connolly Mill, and it's approximately $53,333. And we went from consumed from 2019 out until 2038, within the LOD of how much is, based on the cubic yardage that we take out. So, the expected, until we hit the maximum, we're looking at, we put a little pinch of, you know, some variations on how much we might take out with the expansions, but we're looking like 14 years out from 2025 until 2038. That's assuming a 3% annual growth of how much we would need for the coverage for expansion. So...
Is that, is that assuming that we're continuing Connolly Mill first before we take from the other?
That is strictly just saying Connolly Mill. So, we can also, we've also done the same for Potts property, sorry, and we've also done some of the financials there as well. And depending on the types of soils, and I think it's in your packet, there's a breakdown in there for you that illustrates the values, how much is taken.
It's not in somewhere.
So, it should be right after your little, your little plat map. With the soils borings that were taken, I think previously in 2023, Mark had mentioned that there was a lot of clay there, and he was absolutely correct. There are veins of clay throughout this, and it's the very good kind of clay that is good for cover and extremely expensive. So basing that out, in the worst-case scenario, I did, I did three scenarios, 10% clay, 90% structural coverage. Throughout 13.8 years at 10 and 90, that's 13.5 million. 20 and 80, we're looking at 19.1 million. And then 30% clay, 70%, which is probably what we're closer to, is 24.7 million over 13 years.
Thank you. And I guess, I would assume what the residents around the Connolly Mill would not want to see would be us to then start here and then just delay the process so that the park that was promised never becomes a park, or that it's delayed 50 years or 30 years or something like that. I guess, is there, just for clarity on that, are we simultaneously going to be pulling soil from both locations?
I think that's an internal discussion we're trying to figure out with operations due to the machinery that we have currently, the manpower that we have, and we also have $19 million worth of soils left in our LOD there. So, you know, as an enterprise, like Pam said, just letting that go, we can't pull $19 million to pay for the soils that are there, because we're already going to be somewhat short between Potts and Connolly Mill when the expansion comes. So I think it would be fiscally, you know, irresponsible to give up, or we could, we're still trying to internally figure out how to do both and try to look at that park option as well.
And in addition, the price for utilizing the landfill has to be considered in all of these conversations as well. So, it costs more money to haul from Connolly Mill, but we're not going to give up that asset and not utilize it. The question becomes is, in any given fiscal year, what is the better mix of pulling from Connolly Mill and Potts if Potts becomes an asset?
And then just a quick comment on that, and obviously not so much to do with this, but it would be, I think, it would be helpful for the administration to come up with a date or something to say, "Hey, at this point in time, we're setting a stake in the ground and saying this is when this, this property, Connolly Mill, will become, you know, the asset, a different type of asset."
Sure. Absolutely.
You know, I'm trying to find it, because it was a very good chart, it was a very good graph. Year by year, yeah.
It's right after the plat.
I'm just having trouble finding it right now. I mean, I highlighted it and everything, I cannot find it here, but that's okay. But it does give an exact explanation of everything, including the final couple of years after, I believe, after 38, there's, there's, it even, it even notes some other issues as to how that, those soils could be used.
So again, it's advantageous to us to have both in the, both the savings in two ways, savings in cost of hauling and savings in purchasing of additional cover.
Also, just one other thing to consider, and it's a pretty important one, actually, from an operations and non-financial perspective, the very specific need of what we're doing at any given time on the landfill, whether it's wrapping up where we are currently, whether we're getting prepared to build another cell, whether we're expanding, whether we're covering a cell that we're completed with, there's very specific soil requirements, clay, mix, cover dirt, what have you. So, at any given time, the condition or quality of those is going to be slightly different from Connolly Mill to the Potts property. So...
Here are the studies for the Connolly Mill property to let you know how much dirt was still left there.
We did that internally.
Okay.
I have a question. From my understanding, you said it would be 14 years?
Approximately.
About 14 years.
Depending on the growth, because we are seeing a growth factor and our expansion.
Okay, because the question I have now is 14 years, and we hear people, residents, saying they want to park. So are you saying that you can have a park there until you get rid, finish the dirt in 14 years?
So I, I did have a discussion with someone recently. I don't know if we want to go into that during this session.
No, you don't have to go into it, but you need to consider...
Correct. And we are considering that.
Considering how you can do, have both and maybe get an example of the cost of doing the park, walking trails, whatever you want to do. I guess you'd work with the parking wrecks to find out what it would cost, and you probably might have to separate it, like with a fence or something, but if it was originally supposed to be a park, not digging for dirt. But I think that we need to show the residents, and I'm not just talking about Shadow Hill, but anybody that's interested in walking in the woods, not me, but anybody interested in walking in the woods and trail, you know, understand, and maybe do some kind of, I guess we'd get with Mr. Steve Miller, on what it would cost to do a park, not taking away from you digging for the dirt.
And we have, sorry, Connolly Mill was originally intended to be both. It was supposed to, it was not, it was not supposed to be just park, it was supposed to be dirt and park. That was, because I was at Wreckin Parks when this course came up. The, previous councils made the decision that Connolly Mill Park needed to go behind West Metro Core Park in timeframe. So it was not this council, it was a previous council, and so that is the path that Wreckin Parks is going down. We have done, we have concentrated on Pirate's Wharf, and then West Metro Core is now kind of the next development of a park. I am sure Wreckin Parks would love if the council appropriated funding for both, but, you know, limited funding aspects of things. So, again, I just wanted to kind of put that, but it's not mutually exclusive that we would have to wait 14 years to create a park. What we would have to do, though, is to find the funding to do a park, and at the moment, West Metro Core is a POS park, and the state is requesting that we keep moving on that park because we utilized POS funds. Connolly Mill is not a POS park. It is a park that is just currently 100% funded by county funds. Thus, in the current timeline, is it, it's, it's been Pirate's Wharf, West Metro, Connolly Mill.
If, just real quick, sorry, Josh, to answer your question, because I knew I'd seen it, it's in the work session with the five-year plan. The graphs are in the work session. They're not in this, they're not going to find, it's on 272, page 272 of the, of the PDF, which shows you the exact life cycle of Connolly Mill, if you're interested in that.
Joe?
Being we're going to save all this money by buying pots, which is a good thing, okay? I think we really need, and this needs to come out of the landfill's budget, we really need to move forward on trying to fence that burrow pit. You know, and that needs to come out of the landfill's budget. You're not going to be able to do anything with parks until you do fence that in, and I don't want to be sitting here next summer and hear about somebody getting ground in that, in that burrow pit. We've, we've got some burrow pits on Mount Herman Road, not too far from Powellville, where we've had that experience in the past.
You're talking the burrow pit itself?
The burrow pit only. Yeah, the burrow pit only, and secure it. And that can come out of some of the money you're going to save by digging dirt from the Potts property. I think that's something that needs to be addressed sooner than later.
I, I will state, as, on the financial aspects of that, that is not built into the fiscal 25 budget, but we can easily look at that to build it into the fiscal 26, just so council is aware. Because we don't have, we have, fiscal 25's money is allocated for other concepts. So at this moment, it is not anticipated to be a fiscal 25 expense, but we can look at it for fiscal 26.
We step forward and spend money sometimes earlier than what we think.
I, I'm aware of that, but council also made the decision to not raise the rates as, as rapidly. So the fund balance, there is sufficient fund balance to make this purchase if council wants to make it. We have to make the decision as to, there is no funds in their budget that they could take, it would be, it would be fund balance, and we'd have to look at that number.
We could use the money that we're saving on hauling the dirt from, from Connolly Mill, because there's going to be a great savings there, so.
I just want to, if I could, jump back to Ms. Shields' comment. While Pam's talking about fiscal operations and looking into, looking at making Connolly Mill a park, that doesn't mean, I, a few of us are not diving into looking to see how that would work with parking wrecks, looking into the future, what, some of the concerns that were brought up formerly, and trying to remediate some of those to see where we could fall, when it could, when it could happen, and what's needed. So we're, we're collecting a lot of information while doing everything, so we're definitely looking into that.
Pam explained the third, the third in line. Am I correct?
It is, again, unless there is a windfall of funds, at the moment, the three major projects that I'm aware of for Wreckin Parks is we're, we're doing the next phase of Pirate's Wharf. We are in, I know, Steve left, but I know council, we did a plan, I know there's been public hearings, I know there's been meetings in regards to West Metro Core, which is off of Levin DeShields.
Feels rude.
And so, again, since there is POS funding attached to that Levin DeShields, and I know that Levin DeShields was purchased getting close to 15, 20 years ago at this point in time, the state has requested that you utilize the POS funding projects. And so that is the current thing. Now, again, if we can identify funding for starting park things, we can go down that path, but a full-blown park there at the moment, this is Pam Olin stating this, this is, is based on the financial aspects as, as they currently stand, is probably third in line.
In addition, I have spoken to MSHA and MDE, oil mining permits, and while it's being mined, they, we cannot have people back there. The reason the event happened, it was shut down for mining that day, but as a whole right now, that was one of their concerns.
And that's why we need to look at the fencing aspect then as well.
I think it's very important that you keep that community out there well-informed of what's going on. And although I see the need to buy this property, what I don't want to see is us kind of put Connolly Mill on the hold and start pulling dirt out of here and extend the timeframe out there.
That's my concern when people are like, "Let's jump here." I don't want to, you know, make it longer for Connolly Mill to not proceed forward. That's another consideration.
And as Mike has stated, there are different types, we're expecting different types of soil at both properties. Thus, there may be a need on any given day to be taking from Connolly Mill versus taking from, so we can't have people monitoring Connolly Mill and going, "Well, you're not digging there." Well, that's because today and for the next week or two or month, we need a certain type of soil, and that soil is available to us at Potts, but we intend to need this other one because we still have the need for this type of soil.
What would we do if, if the council didn't approve this purchase?
We would be buying soil.
We're extending an LOD in Connolly Mill, which would be a concern as well.
I mean, this has been bounced around for six years now, and a lot, a lot of reasons, because initially the costs were prohibitive. So I think we've got it where we, where we need it. But, you know, Mr. Atkins made a really good point, and hindsight's really great. How come this wasn't in the CIP? Just curious.
So, as council is aware, a lot of these meetings were still in closed session. So, we can't put property on an open-session document until council has made it to the point that it's now an open-session document. So, you know, a lot, yes, we come to council for amendments because things have happened since the budget has passed, and that has, we are, in comparison to some of our peers who have no ability to amend their budget, I am, I feel very blessed that we have that ability throughout the year, because situations come up, and we wouldn't want to wait a whole nother year to now purchase this Potts property. But due to timing of closed sessions and all that kind of stuff, and whether or not council was interested, there was, this was not put on the CIP and/or the capital budget.
Yeah, we should, I lose, I lose track of the chronological order sometimes, when we're doing closed session, open session, so that's a good thing. I think it's good for the public to know that. I think it's a good thing for Mr. Atkins to know that.
But I do agree with Mr. Atkins, you know, we, it seems like last year and this year, we get through the budget and we're just spending, 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 and we need to keep, to me, a tighter rein on the spending.
Again, we present, we present to council, I apologize, may I?
I was going to say, we knew we were going to spend money on this. So, I, I just don't understand, when we passed our last budget, how come we didn't think about, as a council, that, hey, we were going to spend money on this? Why didn't we take that into effect whenever we passed the last budget?
Because of probably...
No, it's not, it's not your fault.
No, I'm saying closed session, closed session wouldn't have allowed it to be on the...
Right. But as a whole, we all knew, this whole council knew that this was coming.
Until it becomes a public item, it's not something that you...
I know, but on the back burner, we know that this is going to have to be spent on. So, for us to have this conversation where we didn't expect to have this money being spent during this budget is crazy, because we knew we were going to spend this money.
The purpose is to make a clarification for the public and to address questions that Mr. Atkins had. Now, getting back to what Shane said, I can understand that, I mean, because in the past, we've had the same issues where you're saying, "Well, we just passed a budget, we've made, you know, four different amendments to the operating budget in, you know, the last two months," which has happened sometime a bit in the past, but I understand what's happening.
And I mean, I, I will readily admit, we have some items that we want to bring before council, but some of those are related to council-imposed requirements associated with salaries. So anytime we want to make a change to a salary, we're required to come to council if it's not in the budget at that dollar amount. So, again, every one of those is reasons why we come to council for budget amendments throughout the year because of, we start a budget in January, and it has to be good for 18 months. We can do a lot of things, but I don't have a crystal ball and know that all of our spending down to the dollar for 18... down to the dollar for 18 months, so.
It can all be about hindsight. I get it. I understand.
So anyways, uh, we're requesting council to, uh, adopt this budget amendment to allow us to use fund balance to purchase this property.
Any other questions? All those in favor of Resolution 95-2024, say aye. Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 96-2024. This is to authorize the county executive to acquire real property shown as 41.2 acres, more or less, on the northerly and southerly sides of Nail and Mill Road for the purpose of providing landfill cover soil. Just for clarification, the resolution you just passed was for the capital budget amendment. This resolution is actually approving the purchase and sale agreement.
Sir, I entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 96-2024.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution 96-2024 passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 97-2024. This is authorizing Carter Machinery Company, Inc. as a sole-source vendor to provide parts and conduct repairs and preventive maintenance by CAT-trained employees for OEM Caterpillar equipment to be utilized by the Wacomico County Solid Waste Department during fiscal year '25. This resolution does require a supermajority vote in order for it to pass. That means five council members must vote in favor of it.
And motion from council to approve Resolution 97-2024.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Morning.
Morning. Amy Carnutal, purchasing agent, Wacomico County.
Thank you.
Good morning again all. We're here today to recommend approval along with the county executive for a sole-source maintenance and repair contract with Carter CAT. The insured value of the landfill fleet is, is well over $10 million. And there are 80 pieces in that fleet, 20 of which are actually Caterpillar pieces of equipment. Carter, located up in Felton, and I think they have a local office here too, is the only one in the region that's authorized to make those repairs, in some cases to support warranties that we've purchased with the equipment. So maintaining a contract amendment is absolutely necessary to ensure continuity.
Questions from anyone? Ms. Carnutal, I would ask you to make sure that this isn't a company that sells miniature gas grills, is it? She won a, uh, at Mako, she won a miniature gas grill, so I thought I'd take the liberty. Congratulations to the public's reluctance, I'm sure. I gotta go.
Just wanna put that on your report, John, will you?
Yeah, that, that doesn't go in the minutes. Could you have? Just real quick, in the packet, it, it looks like we got, um, letters from Caterpillar, Carter, and Vermeer stating that they're a authorized distributor, dealer for the contracts and warranty and all that stuff. But these letters are dated in July of 2021 to David Candy, the solid waste superintendent. Should we get those letters updated?
We can.
I mean, the letters are three years old.
We can request that.
Yeah. Probably, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping somebody actually looks at these instead of just, to see what I mean. Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Seeing on all those in favor of Resolution 97-2024, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution 97-2024 passes unanimously.
And next sign for business is Resolution Number 98-2024, authorizing Vermeer Mid-Atlantic LLC as a sole-source vendor to provide OEM parts and service for the Wildcat Tremol and HG 6000 TX grinder to be utilized by the Wacomico County Solid Waste Department during fiscal year 2025. This resolution also requires a supermajority vote.
I entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 98-2024. So moved. Second. Mr. Sfaby or Ms. Nudel?
Yes, thank you. In this particular case, there are two pieces of equipment out at the landfill for which Vermeer is the manufacturer and the only one in the region qualified to perform maintenance and repair. It's a grinder and a tremol. GT Mid-Atlantic is the local Vermeer authority, um, and they, they are authorized and capable certainly of servicing those two pieces of equipment. Those two pieces of equipment are absolute necessities, so I recommend that we continue with the same contract.
Questions? All those in favor of Resolution 98-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Moving on to the next matter, we have Resolution Number 99-2024. This is authorizing the placement of a marker on the property of the old Wacomico courthouse honoring Frederick B. Douglas. Council had a work session on this topic on July the 16th, 2024. And before you, Ms. Mr. Bunky Lovman, Director of Administration.
I entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 99-2024. So moved? Second.
Second.
Discussion. Good morning, Mr. Lovman.
Hi, good morning. Excuse me. Yeah, Frederick Douglas visitor our courthouse in 1880, noteworthy event. Raised money for what's now known as the Chipmunks Center, the second floor. I remember in researching this, our, um, Councilman Shields introduced a panel over there that talked about his visit, and I think this was a few years ago. I found it on the internet. But, you know, Chipmunks Center is a great cultural center that we're lucky to still have in our community, and in part because of, you know, the great civil rights leader Frederick Douglas's visit to Salisbury. So I think the sign's appropriate and, and sort of a celebratory sign in front of the courthouse, so.
Questions from anyone? All those in favor of Resolution 99-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution 99-2024 passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Lovman.
And next on the agenda is Resolution Number 100-2024. This is authorizing a two-year contract with Microgenetics Corporation to provide drug testing equipment and supplies for on-site drug testing at the Wacomico County Detention Center. And you have Ms. Chris Tyler here, Director of Department of Corrections.
I entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 100-2024. So moved? Second. Discussion. If you get introduced for the public, introduce yourselves. Thank you very much.
Eric Dickerson, accountant.
Chris Holler, Director of the Detention Center.
Chris, we'll give you the floor.
So we're requesting to continue our contract with Microgenetics. We've been with them since 2018. We currently have their, um, drug testing machine, and obviously their supplies are sole-source. And we've had no issues with them, so we would like to continue our cooperation and testing with that company.
Dickerson, did you have anything you wanna add?
No, it's perfect yet.
All those in favor of Resolution 100-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
The next item for business is Resolution Number 101-2024. This is authorizing the county executive to accept grant awards from the Federal Aviation Administration through the Airport Improvement Program, bipartisan infrastructure law, and from the Maryland Aviation Administration for Phase Two of the construction of the runway extension project. And before you is Mr. Tony Rudy, Director of Aviation.
And motion from council to approve Resolution 101-2024. So moved? Second.
Second.
Discussion. Good morning.
Good to have you here.
Uh, I'll, I'll give you the floor, if you wanna just give us a brief overview beyond what we have in our briefbook.
Sure. Tony Rudy, Airport Director. So every year, we, we come up to the situation where we're expecting to get FAA grants. This year is no exception. We are getting, uh, two grants from the FAA, um, one for five, a little over 5 million, and the other one for a little over 1 million, uh, and, uh, then a matching grant from MAA for 366,000. The, we did, um, have these estimated in the budget. However, we estimate it a little bit low. These numbers tend to fluctuate a bit, so there will have to be, um, a follow-up amendment to amend the budget.
Questions from anybody?
Just wanna note, uh, it looks like completion hopefully in a year. Is that be right?
At, at this point, we're hoping, uh, it's probably gonna be a little bit over a year construction time from when we break ground, and we still have not broken ground yet. We're still waiting on, um, some issues with the state to acquire a piece of property before we can start.
Just, of course, wanna note how big of a deal this is, spending our runway. This, we've been talking about this for a very long time. If we can finally do it, well, you know, this is many, this is, you know, close to a decade or anymore.
Yes.
So pretty great. Thank you.
Yes, Jeff.
Mr. Rudy, thank you. It, it looks like the county investment of this is gonna be $366,000 match.
Yes, for this particular portion.
That's a pretty small investment on a $7 million runway.
Well, in the grand scheme of things, it's, it, the numbers are a lot different from just this piece of it. That's just a small piece of, of the whole project.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor of Resolution 101-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. Next on the agenda, we have Angelie Chetel, the CPA, our internal auditor with, um, three resolutions. I'll let you have the floor.
Good morning, County Council President Cannon and County Council. I'm Angelie Chetel, the internal auditor, and I would like to present for resolution, um, Number 102-2024, accepting the annual audit report for the internal auditor.
And motion from council for Resolution 102-2024.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? I have one question.
Yes.
You noted that, um, in, in your report, you do note projects underway, and two of those, um, projects, one was a cell phone audit, one was a sick, sick pool audit. But you're presenting those today.
Correct.
So would we not put those in the projects completed category?
Um, at, at the time that the report was dated, August 1st, they weren't completed yet. Or, or, they, they might have been like technically completed, but like then the submitting for comments from the, the department and so forth. So, uh, one of them, yeah, they're July 12th and, uh-
Right, yeah, just recently.
Yeah, so, so the, the dates on the reports are, are before that, but they, um, didn't have comments back yet.
Okay, I mean, it's a, it's a small thing.
Yeah.
It's not gonna impact the whole, total report overall. I just thought I'd ask you that question regardless.
Excellent question.
That was great, thank you very much. Any other questions from anyone here? Okay? All those in favor of Resolution 102-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
All right. Again, I would like to present Resolution 103-2024, the cell phone audit.
I entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 103-2024. So moved? Second?
Second.
And discussion?
All right, um, so the, the focus of the exercise was to evaluate the appropriateness of cell phone assignments. The objectives were to determine the population of cell phones and hotspots, evaluate the usage and plan types, as well as to make recommendations if appropriate. The county has 277 lines at the time of testing. Approximately 184 of them were assigned to, um, individual people, um, or, or multi- like, there were 184 assigned to just like one person only. And then 93 were data lines or second lines. Like, sometimes people have two lines. One of them would be called a MiFi, and the other one would be their regular cell phone line. And the monthly costs were about $14,039, including equipment. We concluded that the, uh, cell phone, uh, existence and usage were at an adequate level for public works and then satisfactory for other departments on the IA's three-point scale. And there's several, uh, findings in the audit report, um, as well as some recommendations. And, uh, special thanks to the purchasing department and all other departments for their support.
Questions?
Be glad to answer any questions.
I thought this was an excellent report, um, how you delve into these departments and, and, you know, from your perspective, being able to evaluate these. The concerns that you're finding, whereas some departments, they were mixing their, their, their financing, I guess, to a certain degree, whereas phones in one department were being actually used in another department on, on numerous occasions.
Well, it, it was all within one, the, the one that was-
I say departments, I mean-
Divisions, right. And, and that's the, uh, you know, the Department of Public Works, it has the enterprise funds and the non-enterprise funds. So when there's the potential, uh, mixing of those, then that can be problematic. And so that's why that one was at an adequate level.
Right, which I think is really good, you know, to, because, you know, sometimes everybody's just worried about the day-to-day. And I think they need to understand that is your responsibility to just figure out, uh, the dynamics of how things are working. Maybe if it's, I wouldn't, nowhere near, nowhere in the world would I say it's a misappropriation. It's just a, you know, a better accounting of services.
Right, and, and this audit wasn't actually doing the appropriation-type look. So I, I, I used Munis to make sure that I had a, a complete picture. Like, if I didn't have a complete picture to get more department's phone lines or whatever, but it wasn't actually testing Munis for any sort of misappropriation. So this is merely about the risk, that if it's listed in the wrong cost center, then that's the risk that it could be.
Sure. And, and situations such as lines that were being assigned to people who are no longer employees, I get that things do slip through the cracks, and I, I commend you for reaching out to purchasing and so that they can change their formats and their, their, um, processes.
Yeah, and, and, uh, at the time that the report was completed, everyone that I did find, they had either, um, assigned to another person. And in fact, it, they, they said it was assigned to somebody else, just it hadn't been reflected in the bill yet. So they were reflected in the bill, or the line was terminated.
Sure. And, and that's, see, that's, I think that's the beauty of the whole process there. Your responsibility is, you're supposed to work with these departments and say, hey, here's some, you know, inconsistencies we found. And I, from what I, from what I could read, it seemed like they opened arms, said, yeah, you're not kidding. Let's get this fixed.
Yeah, yeah, purchasing was very, very welcoming, um, and, and receptive to suggestions that I had to update things.
But it'll fix it from here on out for, hopefully for quite some time.
Well, hopefully.
Till next year. No, seriously, I think it's a, it's a really good way for long-term to address these issues. That's good.
Yeah, um, and then you said next year, but I, I think I would like to do this on like maybe a three-year cycle.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
I can understand that. Any other questions? All those in favor of Resolution 103-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Great. Last one. Again, I would like to present, uh, Resolution 104-2024, the sick pool audit report.
I entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 104-2024. Second. Discussion.
Great. Uh, this one, uh, the exercise was to evaluate the adequacy of procedures and controls in place for the county's sick pool system and program. The objectives were to, uh, gain an understanding of the sick pool policies and procedures, determine the adequacy of administrative oversight procedures, review the accounting system for sick pool accruals, and to make recommendations if appropriate. In 2023, about 270 employees, which was about 47% of the employees, were members of the sick pool, and about 2,088 hours were donated to it. I concluded that the sick pool program was at a satisfactory level on the IA's three-point scale. And the, um, report has several findings and additional information, and it'll be also posted on the county website, um, as well as the other audit, by the way, um, after, if you, if you approve it. And then, uh, special thanks also to the HR department and any, all the other departments that, uh, helped in this project. And I'm, uh, glad to answer any questions.
We have a process, I understand, that in January, they have to contribute to the sick pool, and then as contributors, they can then benefit from it.
Yeah, so, um, the, the manual says, like on, I believe it says on January 1st, but i- in reality, it happens a little bit later than January 1st when people make the decision. And then it's based on the December 31st, um, hours, which could have possibly changed, like, if somebody had to use sick leave at the beginning of the year. So maybe they qualified in December 31st, but didn't at the beginning of the year. And then, so the accrual actually has to happen a little bit later than that sometimes.
Question I have, and this is, this is what I found kinda interesting. And we, we may want to have HR here at some point in time. I don't see, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with what the department itself is doing, but I found it really curious that in 2022, 35% of sick pool hours that were approved went to individuals, employees who were non-contributors. Evidently, you know, the big thing is that you're supposed to be a contributor in order to benefit. But there are exceptions that are allowed, and I get it. Um, and that's, that's how it's been, that, that's how the standards are set. But I did find it kind of interesting that in a situation where they even stipulate that contributors, you have to be a contributor in order to benefit, and yet 35% of them in '22 were non-contributors anyway. And then in 2023, more sick pool hours were approved for non-contributors than contributors. So it seems like we have a system that's in place that just is not really, it's not really recognized, I guess, formally.
Well, um-
And I say that without knowing what the stipulations are on that certain section that you said allowed the non-contributors to benefit.
Yeah, I, I think that the, I think the technical language of it sort of permits this usage where it's non-members who do use it. And a couple of things to, to keep in mind in terms of this is that the sick pool balance, and this isn't, wasn't really audited, this, this number them telling you that, that was in the general statistics, because a lot of these hours predate Munis and so forth. So I could only like look at the current, last two years adding, but it, the balance was 62,000 hours. So the, the usage of 3,000 or 5,000, um, you know, even if half of that isn't really sick pool members, it's not really putting a dent in the actual hours in the bank. And then the other thing is, if you, uh, look at the response from the, um- And then the other thing is, if you look at the response from the HR department, she talked briefly about the Paid Family Medical Leave or Time to Care Act, and these are, things are going to be monumentally changing this in the near future, so, and I can't really speak to that. I think even she made reference to the fact that she can't really speak to it until it's like fully underway or something. But I do agree that, going back to your initial statement, that to have HR come in, I think would be a good idea to talk about.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, like you said, it is minimal, but it just seemed like it was funny that we had a policy in place that really was not terribly significant, you know?
I have a question.
Shane?
Just brought it up. The paid family medical leave, they're allowed to take up to 12 weeks. Is that paid leave?
I don't really know what the rules are with the new law, that might be...
Say it's six weeks paid leave, I just use a, throw out a number. Six weeks paid leave, and they can take, they can, and then you, would you have to replace that person, the staffing issue? If a person takes six weeks, would they have to get, go to a temporary agency, or how would that work?
I think that's a management question, and again...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, I said, well, I said 12 weeks, that's a lot of time, and it looked like that you would have a staffing issue, and would that cost money? I think you have to talk about that, I guess, with HR.
There's a lot coming down the pike.
Yeah.
There, yeah, and I think that she really addressed that well, that there's this new Time to Care Act that could be changing, whether we had the sick pool or not, that it could be...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I was just concerned about if someone took 12 weeks off, first of all, when they have proof why you have to take 12 weeks off, but then you'd have to either train or overwork somebody, you'd have to do two people's jobs.
Yeah, the only concern that was really on my radar going into this audit was the GASB 101, that's the Government Accounting Standards Board, and how we report it on the financial statements.
You make a good point, Shani, sick pool will probably never be needed. Any other questions? All those in favor of resolution 104, 2024, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great work.
Thank you, great work.
You too.
Excellent, very detailed.
This time we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in general, please come to the podium, please state your name, your county residence, and your concerns. It's still morning. It is, yes. Don't jinx it.
Mike Goldberg Delmar. This administration has spewed an astonishing amount of misinformation over the past couple of weeks that must be addressed, but I only have time for a few. Item one, the $3,500 donation by ESU to the executive's campaign wasn't really a campaign contribution. Here's the campaign finance disclosure in black and white showing the contribution. The fact that this was a campaign contribution is indisputable. Item two, the MOU between the executive and ESU has been paused. There is no such thing as paused without a mutual signed agreement. The only thing that's changed is that ESU's ability to report police activity has been eliminated because the radios have been seized. The MOU otherwise remains in full force, and ESU continues to act as the executive's public information office. Item three, the MOU is not exclusive. The simple fact is that there is only one contract awarded, and it is therefore exclusive by definition. Item four, a trademark was required to qualify for the contract. A trademark only protects a trade name and nothing more. It is neither an affirmation of credibility nor a press credential. The trademark requirement was imposed only to eliminate competition, and the contract award was predetermined. The courts view this very unfavorably because it suppresses First Amendment rights and is a barrier to entry for real journalists. Item five, ESU can delete posts and ban users at its discretion? The courts have ruled that social media sites used for government business cannot delete posts or ban users, whereas by contract, ESU has been sanctioned as the county's official public information agent. It is bound by the same rules and has therefore defied the courts. And if the supposed purpose of the MOU was to protect the safety of citizens by providing vital information, they sure are limiting who can be kept safe. Item six, ESU posted on Facebook that the executive appoints the sheriff and judges? Sorry, ESU, but the sheriff is elected and judges are either elected or appointed by the governor, and this is who we entrust to provide accurate information to the public? Item seven, the MOU is necessary for transparency and compliance with PIA requirements? The sheriff already meets and exceeds PIA requirements. The MOU is executed only for the purpose of keeping ESU's blog page alive after encryption so that it could continue to provide unfeathered political support for the executive. Of course, this has nothing to do with the $3,500 campaign contribution. Item eight, Monkey Lufman suggested that it's unsavory to criticize the executive's conduct and actions. Yet the executive and her minions publicly disparage and marginalize anyone who disagrees with her. She has weaponized her office against private citizens, communities, and councilmen with impunity. This isn't democracy, it's the very essence of fascism. Vote for the question, HR amendment. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Goldberg. Any other public comments?
My name is James Deline, and I'm a resident of Wacomico County. I'm here today to express my concerns about a recent Public Information Act, PIA request that I made. I requested email correspondence between LiveWire Media and certain county executive staff from 2022 to 2024. Initially, I received a prompt response, however, what followed was a frustrating series of delays and lack of communication that ultimately resulted in a 35-day wait for the fulfillment of my request, well past the legally required 30-day timeframe. When I finally received a response, I was informed that several documents were ready, but some were denied, including one confidential letter drafted by the county attorney, six emails, draft versions of the MOU with LiveWire Media, three MOUs between the county and LiveWire Media denied because they were not related to Safari at the Quarry, even though my request did not mention any limitation to documents related to Safari at the Quarry. The lack of transparency and the seemingly arbitrary denial of documents raises serious questions. The executive branch has entered into a controversial MOU in the name of transparency, yet denies access to seemingly innocuous documents. This experience leaves me wondering, what are they hiding? This morning, in a radio interview, Giardano stated that the Safari at the Quarry was a great success. She claimed that it was just a one-weekend event, but in reality, the MOU allows for an unlimited number of events. Only one happened because it was an economic, legal, and ethical failure. If the Safari at the Quarry was so successful, where's the check? How come the county has not received its rent? How much did the county spend so that LiveWire Media could try to make a profit? We still don't know because it's been hidden from us. There has been no accountability and transparency for the county's losses to prepare the site. It's being hidden from the public. The lack of transparency and the seemingly arbitrary denial of documents in my PIA request raises serious questions. This denial has forced me to seek mediation through the state's PIA ombudsman. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Deline.
Mikel Deline, Wacomico County. I'm here to speak about a troubling pattern which has developed in the executive's creation of recent MOUs. Dangerous and reckless agreements are being made that lead to controversy because they lack transparency, accountability, and common sense. One such MOU for Safari at the Quarry drastically affected my neighborhood. Now, another MOU has been signed with Eastern Shore Undercover, which is very similar in nature and equally controversial. These MOUs were both signed unilaterally, without any public input, and without the knowledge of the county council. They were both signed without consulting the relevant experts that would be able to provide proper guidance and advice. In the case of Eastern Shore Undercover, egregiously, the sheriff was not consulted at all on matters concerning officer safety. The flimsy excuse that some small email was sent and not answered holds no water on signing a contract of this magnitude without having the sheriff review it first. Both MOUs were signed with personal friends, giving the impression of cronyism. Both MOUs involve the use of county property without accountability or oversight. As a result, the internal auditor is reviewing the Safari at the Quarry MOU, and the sheriff has stated that he will be pursuing a remedy through the state's attorney general. The effects of these MOUs were at the taxpayers' expense. Increased illegal trespass at the quarry site continues, and the promise that was made between the previous executive in our neighborhood remains broken. Issues of officer safety and equity of access to public information loom large with the ESU MOU. I spoke at the last meeting about how I'd been banned from ESU for responding to inflammatory posts about our neighborhood and reinstated after speaking with the owner. Ironically, I was banned again before I left this county meeting. I didn't post a single thing on that site after being reinstated, belying the owner's claims that people have only been banned for causing trouble on his page. To reiterate, I was banned while the MOU was active simply for expressing my concerns at this podium. How is this not political discrimination? The owner spread verifiable misinformation on his podcasts and several radio shows in the following week. For these reasons, among others, I believe it is imperative for this MOU to be terminated, not paused, but ended. The executive claims the ESU MOU is for transparency and to bring the sheriff's office into PIA compliance, yet we have been denied basic documents for Safari and LiveWire requested through PIA. The executive demands transparency from the sheriff, but hides behind flimsy excuses like deliberative process and attorney-client privilege to avoid it herself. She does not want her deliberative process to be transparent to citizens, but she wants police radio chatter to be available publicly. As for attorney-client privilege, the taxpayers of Wacomico pay the salary of both the county executive and county attorney, yet we are denied transparency in the dealings between them. Why the secrecy? And how can she champion transparency when she does not provide it herself? This is hypocrisy. These reckless and dangerous MOUs cannot continue for the sake of our entire county. Also, it kills me not to speak on what was discussed today about Conley Mill, but this needed to be said right now, today, and I will be back next week. Until then, my thanks to the council for your thoughtful and relevant questions on the subject.
Thank you, Ms. Deline.
Jim Atkins, Wacomico County. I'll take almost three minutes, hopefully, to talk about the transportation priority letter, which is being sent to the Secretary of Transportation, again, for Wacomico County. In going through the priority letter, I noticed that, once again, Barron Creek Road is included in the priority letter. Kind of a contradiction, I really don't understand how we're saying Barron Creek Road is a priority. We just passed our eight-year anniversary Barron Creek Road washing out. The county spent $257,000 on plans and drawings. The plans, drawings, permits, approvals, everything that was required to replace Barron Creek Road have all expired. So you now would need to start at day one all over again. If you look in the transportation priority letter, it states in the opening that these projects are requested and approved by the executive and the county council. In the open work session you're getting ready to have addressing this, I'm asking it the county council, put this to rest, that this is not a priority in this county. It does not need to be. We are not repairing a road. You're, if you put it back, you're building a road. Eight years, that road is not there. The picture that they put in the priority letter shows a pond and water running where the road was. There is no longer a pond there. There's a little stream that runs through it. There are six and eight feet tall pine trees in where the pond was. This is not a priority. If it is, why haven't three county executives fixed it in the past eight years, other than talking about it? If you're looking for the state to give you money, and you're looking for the state to do things for this county, be realistic. You're asking the state, if you approve this letter, to give you money to replace a county road, not a state road. You have Whitelow Road and Route 50. You have Route 670 and Route 50. You have Route 347 and Route 50. You have Old Railroad Road and Route 50, which all need something done to them at their intersections. People are getting hurt, people are getting killed. I don't think Barron Creek Road has caused any accidents in the past eight years. Let's see, we can't keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins.
Thank you. My name's Joe White, Wacomico County. On August 6, after your regular legislative session, you held a work session, and at that work session, the sheriff of Wacomico County, Mike Lewis, was here along with several other sheriffs from surrounding counties, and Chief Minchin from the city of Salisbury. They all have a vested interest in the contract, the MOU that was signed with our county executive and Eastern Shore Undercover, the proprietor of that site. They discussed in that meeting the reasons that they felt that the officer safety was compromised, and the way that transparency was not served by that. One of the most interesting parts of that meeting, and maybe hasn't gotten enough attention, was Mr. Bob Benson's awesome analysis of the MOU, where he broke down at every level the inconsistencies. Now, according to the current executive, the county attorney, Mr. Paul Wilber, had also analyzed the MOU, and in her words, approved it. However, we do not have Mr. Wilber's analysis on file. We only have the executive's word and his lack of denial that it was. I'm asking the council, and it only takes one of you, according to Section 507 of the county charter, it says it only takes one, to have a written request of the county council, or, I'm sorry, of the county attorney for his legal analysis. Now, doing a lot of history, or a lot of research for history, for why we feel that we should approve Charter Amendment A in November, I've come across several instances when Executive Bob Culver was in office. During his time, there was a finance director who was approved, or not approved, by the county council, and that finance director basically held the job illegally. It's been said to me that we were not even able to go to bond market one year because we did not have a legal signer. Part of the way that that issue came about was we, the county council, requested a legal analysis of the county attorney at the time. It's hard to say that our county attorney is acting in the best interest of the county taxpayers, when it does not seem very often that he disagrees with our current county executive. I'm asking you today, any one of you, to request this now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Mr. White, you're referring to a legal analysis of the MOU.
Correct.
Correct.
Hey, everybody, Andrew Dooley. I live in Wacomico County, and I own Segal Disposal based in Wacomico County. I think what we've all witnessed today and at previous meetings is that we're in an era of technology and information where you can find arguments to support your opinion, regardless of what it is. You can find a ton of data studies that will support you, that you could twist and use in a way to support your claim. This was done in a previous meeting, where to justify raising rates, tipping fees at the disposal facility here, they completely misquoted nearby landfills and what they charge. It was said on record and on recording that Delaware charges $100 per ton. They've never charged $100 per ton. They charge $80 per ton. I have that with me. There's also a rebate program where you get 10-plus dollars back for every ton, for volume users. There was a study stated that raising the rates would essentially cause haulers to go to nearby counties. What they had stated was that haulers were coming into Wacomico to dump at a reduced rate, rather than the county they were doing business in. This basic economics and common sense will show you that when you are driving an hour on a truck that costs $130 to $170 an hour to run, it doesn't make sense to do that to save $50. You know, these misrepresentations would be a fireable offense at a company like mine. If somebody came to me and misrepresented data to me like that to support their argument, I would fire them. They would no longer be at my company. I don't understand why people that we hire or elect at a public level are allowed to misconstrue data like that. misconstrue data like that, or just, you know, use whatever information at their dis... I mean, you can, if you're in a private state, so a state where there are private landfills and publics, so people like me own landfills, and there's also county-run landfills. Of course, if one landfill has a lower rate than the other, and they're very close to each other, of course, that's going to be the landfill used. It's going to be the landfill of choice for the hauler. But when they're 40 minutes from each other, the math does not shake out. And, you know, if the theory is the raising rates by over 16.5% in January will cause reduced disposal, I think, let's see what happens, because it's not going to. It's only going to hurt residents of this county, when, as a pass-through cost, we have to raise these rates to municipalities like Hebron, who've already done their budget, don't have this room in their budget, or Willards, or, you know, many other, Salt City of Salisbury as well. I just, I wish that we would use facts instead of opinions. We would use relevant data and not misrepresent data, or just have it wrong completely. And I have copies of every disposal facility near us. Somerset's 75, Worcester's 80. They even told us they're keeping it 80 all the way through 2025. So, you know, that's where I'm at. Thank you for letting me speak today.
Sir, you're not alleging that someone on this council provided that data, are you?
It's on recording. I don't remember who. I think it may have been Pam Olent that said it was $100 per ton in Delaware. I mean, it's on recording. I have it. And it's on YouTube on PAC 14.
I just wanted to make sure you weren't directing your comments.
Nothing I just said was directed at anyone on the council.
Okay.
Absolutely nothing. I think you guys are the ones being... Look, you guys don't run the landfill. You guys aren't exactly familiar with every single thing that goes on there. You're listening to what people are telling you. And I've heard it today, where things that I know not to be true were said today. So I'm just worried about that. And I don't have anything against anybody there either. I just want the best thing for the county. And when I hear arguments being misrepresented, like, things being misrepresented to you guys, it's concerning to me as a user of the landfill and servicing tens of thousands of people in this county. So that's all I meant. I'm actually in support of the council. I just, I'm worried you guys are being, to be dramatically lied to. So that's all.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Still morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Joe Venosa. I wasn't going to refer to this, but Mr. Dooley, I believe it is, I just wanted to address that point. Once again, he's proven, again, in real time what I said a few months back. The threat to your business, to your customers, to our financial situation is due to this executive form of government. It's proven itself. You, once again, I had a front-row seat. This is why I would encourage you, telling your customers and associates in the business community and the citizens, why we have to vote for Amendment A in the fall. That being said, you brought up something about certain employees in the executive office and misrepresentation of facts. I'm not going to get into that, but I do want to illustrate a part of the problem with that, because over the last several weeks, several current and former county employees have reached out to us and our organization talking about some of the concerns and abuses that they have. Now, some of those people are going to hopefully come on our show, Open Agenda, to actually inform the public about what's really going on behind the scenes in some of these departments and divisions under these executive system's abuses. But I wanted to read one short message that I received, and I was given permission by this from an employee. They're going to remain anonymous, but I think it speaks to the issue here. Hello. "Over the last seven months, the atmosphere that I have been dealing with in my division has been nothing short of terrorism. I've worked for the county for several years, and it's devolved into what I feel is worse than high school drama. Certain employees, particularly those that are friends or allies with the executive, are routinely given authority over decision-making that is not their job description. I truly have anxiety over what I've experienced and actively am looking for another job. I can't believe that the job I've gone to four years has now become a source of my biggest problem in my life. Please know that I am not the only one feeling this, but many others are afraid to speak out." That was one. We've received others who have asked us not to say anything. And I know many members of the council have been contacted by employees. This is not a secret. Once again, what's the common denominator? The county executive office. We saw it put our first responders' safety in jeopardy, so much so that at the last meeting, the sheriff brought other county sheriffs and municipality leaders and law enforcement to explain why that's a danger. So it's not just businesses are under threat and costs and employee retaliation. It's the literal safety of our first responders and other people. We know what the solution is. Vote for the charter amendment in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? That concludes public comments, council comments. Shane.
I want to thank the guys from Open Agenda. If I missed anybody, I'm sorry. Joe White, Joe Venosa, Mike Goldberg hosted a town hall last night in Parsonsburg. Several people were there. Some of us were there. And I really thought you guys put things together for the public to understand of why you should vote for Question A. This was very informative, even for me. I appreciate it. Just wanted to thank you guys for hosting it, and hopefully you'll do that around the county, so everybody can hear what you have to say, and then they can make their own decision.
Josh.
Of course, I don't know if, is today actually Janie, your birthday?
Yeah.
Are we going to sing her happy birthday?
Yeah.
Let's do it.
Don't do that.
Oh, come on.
We'll save it for lunch, but happy birthday. I do want to say also, we attended the Mako, the Maryland counties conference this past week, and I did have an opportunity to try to continue to do a lot of outreach across the state for, to folks to share what's going on in Wycomico, to make new connections. I was able to actually introduce one of our, the folks in our, in the county administration to be able to, a new funding source that I know of that could potentially bring $100,000 into the county in grant money. So, things like that, I think, are always important. I'm trying to make the most of it, and it's great to see so many folks there. And then, last thing I'll say, I guess, is, I'll mention it later on, but I do agree with, you know, with Mr. Atkins on the Barron Creek Road. I've said this again, I do not think that we should be moving forward with that. We'll talk about it later. But having grown up there, at my home area, and I just don't think that's, you know, we should be moving forward with. But, and so I appreciate his continued due diligence. Eight years in, I'm still bringing it up. So, that's all. Thank you.
Other comments. Shane?
Yes, it is my birthday. I'm 75 years old. And I said, I'm going to run for reelection. I'll be Joe Biden, because when I get done, I'll be in, like, '81. So I love doing this job, and it's rewarding to me. And I think part of it is like my mental health therapy, because I like, I'm project-oriented, and I like to see things get done in a positive way. And I also like to disagree with people, because I'm a debater, but I want to remain cordial and civil. That is what I try to do with people. I don't have anything against people, and if people have a problem with me, that's their problem, because I tend to try to get along with everyone. But yes, I thank my classmates. We all turned 75, and I want to wish all my classmates from 1967 happy birthday.
Right.
Thank you, Andy.
Jeff?
Good morning, everybody. And I want to echo Josh's sentiments about Mako. It was awesome. I believe it was the largest turnout they've ever had. Yes, there's good, a lot of information out there. I do want to thank the Wycomico Clean Group and Green SBY. They put together a litter pickup effort this past Saturday. We gathered at Shoemaker Park, and we didn't know how many people we were going to have, but I think we ended up with about 20-plus people. We had so many people that we were able to divide up into five different groups and kind of spread out, so we were able to clean up a lot of, a lot of stuff. And included in the group was Mayor Randy Taylor, Council President Cannon, Councilman Josh Hastings, and myself. Working with Janet Albarro, thank you for working with us on picking up what we pick up and coordinating that effort and weighing everything and keeping track of what we picked up and all of that. Switching gears, I want to touch for a minute about the, something that was brought up at the podium, misinformation. Unfortunately, there's so much out there, it's just impossible to keep track of everything. But I did want to highlight a couple points I've heard recently. The first one is, it appears that the council is being accused of defunding the fire department. So I'd like to briefly explain that. Laura, I believe you have a slide to put up. When the council was presented the budget in April by the executive, as you can see, the fiscal year 24 revised budget and the FY '25 proposed budget are the same number. That's called flat funding. That means no extra money. If you go over one column to the right, you can see that the additional money that was recommended by the council and ultimately, and thankfully, approved by the executive, we actually approved or recommended $825,000 additional money for the county fire departments, and the executive thankfully approved that. Salisbury Fire Department, and I see Chief Frampton out there. Thank you for joining us. Appreciate our discussions. The FY '24 revised budget was $1 million. FY '25 proposed was $2 million. What we approved, what the council approved, was $1.6 million. So you can look at that two different ways. We either cut them by $400,000, or we added $600,000 over what we gave them last year. I think that's a glass-half-full, glass-half-empty mentality. Depends on how you look at it. I will say that the other $400,000 is still in discussion, and I'm really confident that we will come to a fiscally responsible solution to all this. And what you see up there is one of the many, many things that are available on the county website. You won't find that on Facebook, but you will find it on the county website. I think the next one is, and this was really weird. It appears that we're being accused of removing the Public Works Director position in the proposed charter. So Laura, you got another slide there. Yep. Now, somebody over 40 can read that. As you can see, all of the departments are in there. I think it's something that was taken out of context, and it was really surprising because three high-ranking county officials, including one elected official, was the one spreading this rumor that we've eliminated the Public Works Director position, which is absolutely 100% false. No positions have been eliminated. No departments have been eliminated, as you can see. But if you read farther down from there, it will show that it's a repeat of that, and it's all been crossed out. Maybe that's what they were looking at. I don't know. But one thing I do know was, we never got a phone call or an email questioning, "Hey, what's going on here?" So, again, you can find that on the county website, too, and probably not on Facebook. The last example I have is what happens on social media and the misinformation that's out there. Laura, can you get the... This is a screenshot that was sent to me with the question, "I'm confused. I didn't know the executive appointed the sheriff and the judges." And I was like, "Well, that's not correct. Let me go to the site and..." I can't believe that. So, of course, me naturally not trusting people, and I want to find out for myself, I go to the site, and it's gone, which means it's been removed. I don't know. I can't explain it. I don't operate the page. But the problem is that that information is out there, and it's 100% false. The executive does not appoint the sheriff. The executive does not appoint the judges. Can't explain why it was up there. As we approach the election in November, I would pretty much guarantee that the misinformation and this divisive rhetoric is not only going to continue, but it's likely going to increase. So I will continue to encourage people, check your facts. Send an email. Pick up the phone. Ask the question. We use phones for everything else. We video people, take pictures. Pick up the phone and talk to somebody. I got an email this morning about Old Railroad Road and Route 50, about 20 minutes before the council meeting. I've already answered the gentleman. Very simple. On October 9th, there's going to be a forum at Salisbury University that's open to the public. It's put on by the Greater Salisbury Committee, the Salisbury Chamber of Commerce, and Salisbury University Pace Program. It's a forum about the executive and council forms of government. If you want to know the real answers, and you want to ask some good questions, come to that event and get your answers. If you want to believe the drama and the divisive rhetoric that's out there, feel free to do that, too. But then you're going to be misinformed. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Vice President Merritt. Councilor Holliday?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for being here today, and folks that's watching on PAC 14. I want to congratulate the folks that worked on the county fair, putting on a great event. Hundreds, if not thousands, of people were there for this past weekend. It was a great, just, it was great to go out there and see all the folks you, sometimes you just see them that one time a year, you know. So, anyway. By the time we have our next council meeting, school will be starting, and I urge everyone to be cautious with around the school buses. Kids walk into school. We had a tragic incident just down the road from myself, and the sheriff lives not too far from me, right by his house, really, last week, where a young man was hit on a skateboard. And unfortunately, the driver left the scene. Just slow down, you know. Keep an eye out for the buses. Keep an eye out for the kids, you know. Let them be there to go to school the next day. We went to Mako last week. Mako's always an informative event, and it's never without at least one surprise. So, we were at a breakfast meeting, county coalition breakfast meeting, and they always allow different companies to get up and speak. And, what was the name of that company, John? Cash? Cashnet or something like that?
Something like Cash.
So this, so let me step back just a little bit. A few years ago, we were, we were at a meeting one day, and the council and the executive, this was a prior executive now, and a gentleman stood up and introduced himself. He says, "I'm your new lobbyist in Annapolis." Well, everybody was kind of looking at each other, thinking, "Where did this come from? We didn't know we had a lobbyist." Well, the executive had hired him. And so, at this meeting last Thursday morning, this gentleman's at the podium explaining this company that he has, and he says, "So far, we're working with two counties in Maryland, Hartford County and Wycomico County." Well, I kind of look at John. I said, "Where did this come from?" So, here we go. You know, another surprise that's been laid at the feet of the county council. This company's supposed to be working with the county. The council knows nothing about it. You know, it's, it slaps you in the face of transparency when people keep saying, "Oh, we got to be transparent. We got to be transparent." But you end up getting more surprises all the time. So, again, thanks for being here today, and thanks for the people that are watching on PAC 14. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any other comments? James?
Speaking of transparency, my comment has nothing to do with supporting any news organization. organization. Just want to preface that. But I have concerns about encryption. I know, I know that it protects officers. I understand that. But my concern is, when do we get information about these police calls as a, as a community? Is it something that will never come out unless it's a press release? Or will it come out the next day? I don't know. That's, that's my concern because anything can happen in our community, and if it's not released at a press release by the sheriff's department, we will never know as a community. That, to me, is a little concerning, especially if we're not going to create a policy to release that information at some time. I know encryption is something new that we are doing. Worcester County is doing it, and states across the country are starting to do it. And we're also seeing states create policies with it. So, it would be nice to see our county create some sort of a policy to combat this because if we don't, then 147 other people in Annapolis will create that policy for us. And I don't know about you, but I would like to have that local control of creating a policy. And, but I like to reassure that I absolutely understand the importance of encrypting, but there is a dual-edged sword of censoring the public. So, we need to be able to provide that information at some point. I don't know if it's 20 minutes or 20 hours, but that is a policy that I think our county should try to figure out instead of Annapolis. So, anyway, that's my comment.
James?
If you know this, but the sheriff's has a website.
I seen the website, and the last time they updated it after the last meeting was, I think, two weeks prior. And I don't know, and they've updated it recently, but they don't, it's not like, it's, it's what, it's what the sheriff's department wants to put forward. And that, to me, is a little concerning because if somebody gets shot down the street from my house, and they don't put the press release out saying somebody was shot down the street from my house, I'll never know. But I do, I have seen that website, yes.
I'd like to say one thing, James. I've worked at the Daily Times for 15 years affiliated with it, and every day, we received press releases from the police departments, and we would put it in the paper. Now, sometimes, things might get cut because of the inch. Everything is done by inch. But the press releases are sent to us. Now, if something's being investigated, they won't give us the information until the investigation is over. And then you see, right now, you're getting things on your email, who's being sentenced, who's been arrested. SWAT teams, you see pictures of drugs that's been collected, guns, money. So, still, you have to be careful what you put in right away because, you know, the investigation is going, an ongoing thing.
Right.
And so, that's one of the things. But I do know that we received press releases at the Daily Times because I would type key them in the system. Also, Barbara Duncan, and she was a chief, and they're continuing this, they have a website also that tells you how many crimes, rapes, murders, whatever, you know, that's happened. They even have a map, I think, that you can see where the crimes are being committed. So, that's one thing that you can maybe look up so you can feel comfortable, you know, with it.
Well, my thing is, is it, is it, is it something that, that, the corporate, I'm not, that particular entity wants to put out, or is it something they have to put out? I just would like to see some sort of a, something put together saying that this information has to be disseminated at X, Y, and Z after a call is completed or something because what if it never gets put out? We talk about transparency all day here. I would like to see that have to be provided after a call is closed to protect everyone.
It actually already is.
I would like to see that.
The calls for service through Sunday night, and today, they'll put up calls for yesterday. This is the thing that's been on sheriff's office for years. The app, they just need to click on it. I mean, information's already there. They just need to look for it. I've had the app on my phone for four years. It's got press releases, calls for service, all kinds of cool buttons you can push.
Alerts as well.
It works.
I mean, you get alerts as well.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you could get alerts too. Plus, all the emails we get with the press releases, yeah. Yeah.
Any other comments? Under presidential comments, yeah, I'd like to say that the county fair was a great success. It was a lot of fun. A lot of people went out to it. It's, it's a, it's a good signature for Wycomico County to have that type of an event and for it to be so successful. The, what, Josh, no, Jeff, what Jeff was talking about as far as picking up trash, we had a great time on Saturday. Josh, I know was there as well. And I, you have to hand it to two citizens that have just started an absolute movement. You know, you have Mark Engberg and you have Bruce Robson, who started this on their own. And the number of streets that have been cleaned in Wycomico County, it's very, it's amazing. And I think whatever we can do to continue to help them as a county is significant and important. We should follow through with that because they are doing it on their own. We have to appreciate that. In reference to some questions I've received in regard to the Safari at the Quarry and the LiveWire company that put on this event, while we are attempting, as a council, to try to get the information out to the public as to exactly what transpired, we do not have any type of an accounting at this point in time as to what county costs were incurred. We would like to have that. Any type of business endeavor, and we do it all the time through the Civic Center and Wreckin' Parks with Mr. Miller, for the most part, any business endeavor that you get into, 30 days is it. 30 days is when you get your financial statement so that you know whether or not that, that event was profitable or not profitable. 30 days. The comments that have been shared with us have been, well, you know, they can't give you that because there are so many unexpected legal expenses. Well, legal expenses are already covered in the, in the, in the contracts that the, that the provider would have. In other words, you might have, I guess, just a basic rider. You'd have general liability. There's another form of insurance. It's called aggregate event insurance, which automatically is an expense that the promoter pays ahead of time. So, to say that there's unanticipated additional legal expenses, from my perspective, that's already been covered for in those, in those riders. So, again, we are trying to do the best that we can as a council to try to get the information so that the public knows exactly what transpired, what the expenses were to the county, and whether or not the county is receiving a check or whether we are not receiving a check for the 10% net. So, just wanted to keep you abreast of that. Outside of that, I entertain a motion to adjourn so that we can go to open work sessions.
Move.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Meeting is adjourned.
Take a break.
No, I don't want to take a break yet. I want to get through the Solid Waste Five-Year Plan before we go to lunch since, since everyone is here. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
The first item we're going to go through is the Solid Waste Five-Year Plan. Mr. Swabe, still, good morning. We have two minutes.